Information, so. Thanks, Miko. So this is our preliminary draft. We want your input. We want your questions and any direction that you have. We'll let you know where we anticipate there's still open questions. Over to you, Miko.
Okay, um, let's start first with the calling us to order officially and doing roll call.
There you go.
So we're starting the meeting. Right now it is. Three thirty-four and I'll call roll call Director Pine.
Is it?
And Director Bert.
Here.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Done.
Okay, we'll do a quick roll call vote on that. Director Pine, do you approve of the agenda?
Yes.
Director Bert?
Yes.
Do we have any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised and I don't see any requests to speak, so we can move on. Okay, so what we have for you today is a preliminary draft of the numbers we're working on for the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. This draft does include a increase in the member contributions. I'm not sure if you all have had the opportunity to really review it, but however you'd like to handle this, we can go through each category, each section. Whatever you prefer. In order to go ahead and have a discussion on what we are projecting at this point. So would you like me to go through each budget item?
Gary can highlight the changes.
Okay. So we start off with personnel and we are. Proposing a. Five and a half percent COLA increase for staff. We have an increase in employee benefits as expected. There will be. An increase in membership dues. Just a reminder, membership dues include our. Annual payments to organizations like Aqua, JPIA, CSDA, and SDRMA, which is California Special Districts and Special District Risk Management Authority. Also includes our annual membership to organizations like the Government Finance Association. And a few other things like that. See, the employee administration fees covers the cost of processing. Payroll on an annual basis and paying for tax forms and employer taxes. That covers the personnel section at this point. Do we have any questions?
So the COLA, that would be what you're suggesting for the increase in salaries?
That's what we're suggesting right now. We may be coming back with an additional request. We're basing this rate right now off of what. Calpers and SSI have put out for their annual COLA increases for 2022. The CPI is not available. Their numbers for the Bay Area will be available as of March 10. But as of right now, this is what we are projecting is presenting a COLA of five and a half percent.
And member benefits, could you just break that down? It's always shocking, even though I should know to expect that it's such a big number.
So the employee, employee benefits. That is the, yeah, that is the medical dental life insurance envisioned that the agency. Provides for each of the employees. It also includes our retirement benefits. Also included is short-term and long-term disability that the agency contributes to and that, that. And that is what is included in that employee benefits total.
And if you'd remind me, our retirement program, what, what, what do we use?
We have, we use Calpers. We have two tiers for Calpers. We have the classic employees and the pepper employees.
Got it. And the medical per employee is, or what, what program do we use and?
We use Aqua JPIA benefits. The agency had done a. Several audits with a firm who did a search for the best benefits for an agency our size since we are so small and Aqua. So far to this day provides the best. The best policies for an agency our size with reasonable pricing. So again, that includes the medical. Most employees are on Kaiser plans. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
My only reaction would be, you know, on the COLA. You know, I don't necessarily know if we can match inflation or not. I mean, the. Many, many boards are giving increases more around, around the three percent range, even though the environment has a high inflation rate. So that, that might, that would probably require some board discussion.
We'll continue to benchmark with San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, the Santa Clara Valley Water District and other agencies of similar size and scope. And watch what Calpers and other agencies are, are posting as their COLA adjustments so that we're. In the ballpark. We're, we're also monitoring where our staff salaries are with regard to similar staff. Job descriptions and other agencies and are aware that we are somewhat lower than, than comparable positions in other agencies.
Do we have any more comments or questions regarding the personnel?
At this time for me, no.
So moving on to contract services, we are expecting an increase in legal counsel fees. Auditor, we're expecting to remain the same. Project consultants, we're seeing a $10,000 increase upstream of Highway 101 project expenses. We're actually expecting. A little bit of a decrease in spending for the next fiscal year. We have funds set aside for the Reach 2 EIR addendum, the CAP 205. We're projecting an increase to contribute towards that. And the Reach 1 O and M, we're expecting that to remain the same for next fiscal year at this point at about $70,000.
And I would interject that for legal counsel costs, we are still looking at some of the. Things that may change that we may incur. Costs related to the Sequin NIPA work around Safer Bay project. And for project consultants, again, in that area, we are looking at having resources to be able to jump on some. Potential upcoming grant opportunities. So being able to utilize some of our existing consultants that we already have on contract. To help us perform, do the technical analyses and compilations for really good grant application packages. Or the Reach 2 EIR addendum or the supplementary EIR for the top of bank work. I still don't know. I don't have an answer from our colleagues at Valley Water about the, the cost that they estimate such an environmental impact report supplemental. Would cost the $50,000 is a placeholder for now. I anticipate that that will be refined over the next week or two.
You know, on the Safer Bay issue. As we several years ago started wading into this and, and ended up having that. Our agency would deal from the creek northward and not from the creek southward. It really wasn't an issue in the initial years. The fact that. The two Santa Clara County agencies. Are full participants Creek JPA, but now we're getting this bifurcation of, of the long-term. Roles here. So has there been a discussion about that issue and how we're going to contend with as that cost may go up? How do we contend with, with the? The disconnect. Of the Palo Alto and Valley Water not really being participants in that.
That issue has certainly been put on the table. I think we need to probably have a more fulsome discussion about it. There are, to address what I anticipate is your ultimate concern is, can there be an accounting that squares up? What time and resources are devoted to north of the creek versus south of the creek? And do the members south of the creek need to chip in for that? Or, or at the same level as those north of the creek. It's an accounting. Practice. It's an accounting method that would be easy to implement to help us differentiate. You know, that, that subpocket that, that, if you want to call it, the allotment, if you will, if we can split the tab a certain way. I, I don't think it would be difficult. So if the board. Wanted to have that kind of a. Division of contribution, it could be facilitated by some pretty simple accounting.
And how many dollars? At this fiscal year related to that? Project.
Um, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I could, I could get that for you. We have a DWR grant. That is just for Safer Bay. So we are working off of the, the funding that's coming from that grant for most of the work that is happening this year. In terms of. If you would like us to break out staff time as it's related to the Safer Bay project, I could break that out for you. It's probably. Total 25%.
So that's getting to the point where it's not nominal anymore. Dave, what are your thoughts on kind of the appropriateness that we? Begin to tackle this dilemma?
Yeah, I'm trying to, or in some discussion, that is a significant, significant percentage going to the. South Creek entities.
Yeah. So I hadn't realized it was maybe that percentage of staff time so far. It's an important project, but it's, you know, we, we, we. As an agency said, well, for kind of lack of another, for kind of a need of an agency taking leadership. We, we did in the first few years. I, I think it was pretty nominal staff time, but it sounds like his progress is being made on this. It's also. Becoming a more substantial part of the, the budget. I'm frankly, I'm surprised that Valley Water hasn't. Raised more of an issue before now, or maybe I missed out on that.
No one at Valley Water has raised that as an issue. I, I anticipate that they may be interested in that conversation, but they have not brought it forward to me. We've certainly not been shy about sharing with them. The progress on Safer Bay and what we're doing. So it won't be a surprise to them. You know, that, that it is a significant. Level of endeavor for the organization.
Yeah, I just, it seems to me that we need to go, going forward, need to try to. Allocate the costs that only pertain to the San Mateo County partners. To those partners. And I, I don't want to sound too parochial, but I, I think that's probably fair and appropriate.
While I agree that there are reasons to be careful about being fair. I would also ask that the board consider. A lot of this work has mutual benefit. So the benefits to the Santa Clara County. Near north neighbors in San Mateo County. You know, if, if protecting Highway 101 is a benefit of the Safer Bay project, it certainly benefits the city of Palo Alto.
Yeah, but it cuts both ways. The, the work that's being done on tidal protection south of the creek. Has similar benefits. I don't know how to break them down exactly, but you know, it's not like nothing's being done south of the creek. What we have is. A parallel effort that's being done south of the creek by another agency and Palo Alto and, and Valley Water. Are contributing both places.
Do you want to continue this part of the conversation at our next finance committee meeting? And perhaps Miko and I could propose. An allocation framework?
Uh, yeah, let's, let's fold it over for more discussion there and, and I think Dave knows I. I haven't been the most parochial. Valley Water over the years has, has had concerns because they were. Kind of our biggest. Funding source on a lot of. Really all of our projects and so. I'm surprised this hasn't hit their radar and I think they've maybe been a little asleep on it and getting out ahead of it might be a good thing.
Or, or maybe they've just been distracted. I think their, their plate is very full.
Distracted or asleep on it. I think it's a similar concept.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, do we have any other questions for contract services? Moving on. Administrative budget. We have some increases as well. We have increases in computer software. Meeting supplies. We have an increase, travel and training. We've lowered that a little bit. Office supplies remaining the same, telecommunications remaining the same. IT, we are seeing a small increase. Postage, we're. Still relatively low, but we're seeing an increase. Printing and design. We will be seeing an increase in the next fiscal year. We anticipate. Website cost remaining about the same liability insurance as the rates that we have been. Given from SDMA, we expect. Little bit of an increase. Office lease, we're expecting an increase and.
What's going on with the office lease? Because that's a pretty big change.
Um, well, right now, based off of information that Margaret has received. We are expecting to have a substantial increase over the next year. We're still waiting on final numbers to come in. So this is what we're projecting as of, as of right now, but we are still waiting on additional information from our office management company here.
So our lease renewed. Seeing if I can remember the month, October, and I was able to negotiate a very small increase. But it was for a shorter term. So the Regis office spaces are quite accommodating and I'm hopeful that we can, can. Negotiate another small increase as long as we are seeing vacancies in office spaces like we are. I'm fairly confident that we can negotiate for a small increase. However, if there is an uptick in the commercial property space. That may be harder to negotiate a very small increase. Last time around, I think I held it to less than a three percent increase.
So I share Dave's question on this, that the office market. Is certainly in flux. Vacancies are high. We're seeing. A lagging adjustment. A lot of, a lot of landlords were reluctant to drop rates initially and they're starting to have to face up to realities. With a hybrid work model, I think it's going to be a number of years before we. Have the demand that we work our way back up to the historic demand. And so what, what's the square footage? Rate that we are currently charged?
I don't know it by square foot. I can look it up for you and send that in our meeting notes, what our lease rate is per square foot and total. Off the top of my head, I'd, I'd have to go fishing around in files and go find it.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I would. Not assume that we should be having. Much of an increase, if any at all. In this market. Now there may be, we may be in a spot where. That particular space is in greater demand than. The rest of the market right now. I don't know that, but overall, we have massive vacancies and the market's finally starting to really adjust to it. The landlords. You know, we're kind of treating the, the first year plus of the, of the. Impacts of the pandemic as anomalies and now they're, they're realizing that. The hybrid work model is just. Significantly reduced the demand for space.
Maybe here to stay for a while.
Yeah, I mean, the big, the big tech companies are continuing to grow and, and have enormous expansion, but. But many others and kind of the rest of the market is in a different mode. Davis, is that, how does that align?
Yeah, I think that's accurate description. Just when, just on its face, you know, it's like a 25% increase.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a placeholder number until we narrow that down. Miko and I will work on researching what the current market is. More for the, the shared workspace, like the Regis workspaces. The last increase again was quite nominal. But the term was shorter than I wanted, but still it was, I think, pretty favorable to us. So we'll go back, we'll do our homework on this particular number and get back to you with. An updated estimate.
Sounds good.
Yep. In the meeting supplies line, and I hate to focus on something like that, but. That's a pretty substantial increase, $7,000.
It is, and our meeting supplies, computer software and IT, we are anticipating having to prepare ourselves for hybrid meetings. Our meeting supplies is also where our Zoom subscription falls under since it is used specifically for meetings. And as you are aware, that is a substantial expense. So that, that is why we have that increase.
And if I may chime in, when we go to a hybrid system. Depending on where the meetings are hosted, we may need to supply our own second laptop. Video camera, microphone. You know, ancillary software or whatever's necessary to make that function. So we, we want to be prepared in the event that we are either going to return to. In-person meetings where we have to do a lot more hard copy printing and. And so the printing and copying costs are going to increase, or if we're going to use a hybrid model where we have to do both the printing, copying and provide for more. Both in-person and electronic access.
Okay, so yet to be, yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined. Yep.
Do we have any other questions or comments regarding the administrative budget portion?
I mean, no.
And the last item would be general contingency, which is remaining the same at 35,000. And that concludes what we are presenting at this point.
So did we have the, what would be the prospective member contributions?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's at the, at the top. Margaret, can you scroll your screen up?
Yep.
Oh, I went right past it. Sorry.
Yeah. So right now, we're, we. Currently in this preliminary draft are expecting an increase to 397,515 per member agency. And this does include 15% contingency. I mean, I'm sorry, 15% for reserves as the board voted on last October. However, the reserves amounts can and should be discussed by the board on what percentage we would like to have at this point. We went ahead and held 15% because that is what the board. Went with last fiscal year.
And. So we had 15% reserves last year as well?
Yeah, sorry, the current fiscal year we are in, it's the first time it was enrolled in the budget at 15% for 21, 22 budget.
So shouldn't that, not that, wouldn't that number be going up then? 15, because we have a higher. Higher, we have more revenue, so 15%, shouldn't the 35 be increased?
Shouldn't the, uh, shouldn't the?
Right, so Miko, the basis is on not 1,606, it's on 1,909.
Our, our reserves policy is based off of expenditures, not, not revenue. When the board passed the reserves policy, it was based off of expenditures, not revenue.
Sorry, but expenditures are increased, so shouldn't?
Yes.
Didn't that 35 be up, increase somewhat?
I'm trying to see, what do you mean by 35?
So $35,000 is the, the.
That's contingency. We're talking reserves.
Oh.
Yeah.
I got it to mix up.
Yeah, the contingency remains the same. We've, we've held that steady at $35,000 continuously.
All right, and so. Where on here are we seeing the reserve?
Reserves is just added, it's, it's not a separate budget item. It's added directly into the member contributions.
Okay. I don't know. Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say that member contributions, we're looking at. What about, I, I don't see that a percentage calculation, maybe around 18% or something like that.
Yeah, it's just over 17%. It's down at the listed, at the bottom of the spreadsheet. It's where it should state it.
So we've still, I, I can say that, for instance, our city got, which got really walloped based on our. Particular revenue streams over the last two years and we, we had significant staff reductions and. A whole bunch of really very difficult belt tightening where we had every one of our departments, including public safety and, and we're now in a very difficult period. Probably the worst. Fiscal situation we've been in many decades. A 17% increase is a big thing for us these days and way disproportionate to. Inflation. So it's going to be, I think we need to be able to explain how in the aggregate, we're, we're going to go up this much.
Right. One of the items that I want to call your attention to that may help answer that question, Pat, is this one that's for the CAP 205 study.
Yep.
So that's a nigh on doubling of what we had in this year's column. And the reason for that is if we contribute more funds to the Army Corps of Engineers CAP 205 study. We can accelerate their work and significantly speed up the project. Hoping that we can maintain our envisioned construction schedule. So this is an item again for the board's discussion and I'd like to have this as a robust discussion. If it would be helpful at our next finance committee meeting to have Kevin come in and do a brief description of. What are the pros and cons about keeping it at the, the lower level? Or basically hitting the accelerator with some more money to expedite the CAP 205 study.
Yeah, I think, you know, that looks like it's about 60% of the budget increase and that would. Be an important explanation and, and it may be something that's compelling that. But I, we might want to even break out what our cost increase are outside of that because that's kind of a change in. Major program. Emphasis and acceleration, as you said.
Yep. So I can ask Kevin to, to join us at the next. Yep. So I can ask Kevin to, to join us at the next committee meeting and describe briefly what the advantages are, um, of that accelerated expenditure and how that will help advance the project to help inform the board's discussion about this important point.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's, that's important and everyone understands that well. What's our next biggest increase after that?
Legal and others, the rent, the legal and then other, the cola.
Legal is about 20,000. And again, that's uh, predicated on their support for our sequanepa process. And all of the document management associated with that. The cola increase, and again, we'll, we'll continue to benchmark that. And we will tighten our numbers and calculations on the office lease. I think we can bring that number down. I think that's a conservative number.
And on the, uh, legal, do you, do you see that this year is likely to be a real increase in kind of their, their scope of work?
Only associated with the Safer Bay project. With the, with the services that we would want for, um, ensuring that there is attorney client privilege with certain draft documents and that whole document management regime, if you want to call it that.
Okay.
Um, I am anticipating that we will have a resolution to the, the, the ongoing Joshua case in this fiscal year. Knock wood.
Okay. And when we look at, um, the member contributions, would they potentially be mitigated by any other um, grant opportunities or with those uh, grants track with additional expenses?
Um, so the grants that we have don't afford us any operating funds. There are no administrative costs or overhead allocations in, for example, the Measure AA grant or the existing DWR grant. I don't anticipate that we'll have the brick grant from the safer program in the next fiscal year. I do anticipate that we'll have at least one, if not two of the hazard mitigation grant program grants. First, the Pope Chaucer Bridge Grant and its budget expansion. And potentially the East Palo Alto Safer Bay HMGP grant. However, I don't know again, how much, if any, of that grant is allocated to our operating expenses. So those are accounted for separately. All of the grants go into like a, a capital program. And especially for the HMGP grants, they're applied for through our member agencies. Those funds don't actually come to us first.
Okay.
The HMGP grants in particular have to go through an organization that has an adopted hazard mitigation program or hazard management plan. So that's either a county, a city or uh, in this case, Valley Water. So East Palo Alto is the app official applicant for the Safer Bay grant and Valley Water is for the Pope Chaucer and Channel Widening.
And the Newell Bridge, we have, uh, there's nothing in our budget that is related to it, right?
Um, not directly, um, staff time and probably, um, at, at some point, a measure of the permit costs for applying for the regional water quality control board related suite of permits, because we've coupled the Newell Bridge permit with ours. So I, I think Palo Alto is intending to contribute their fair share of those permit costs, which we still do not know what will, they will be. Um, but we're absorbing some of the costs for that through staff time as well.
Okay.
So
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I also wanted to remind the committee that per our reserves policy, the board will determine a percentage of what to contribute to the reserves annually between 12 and a half to 17 and a half percent. So as I said, we put in 15% because that is what the board voted on for this current fiscal year, but that can also change the amount of the annual contribution if we went with the lower reserves percentage this year.
Got it. Okay.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. So just to do a quick recap, I think what I heard as the action items for us to come back to you with more information on the 10th include, um, bifurcating north, south, north and north of creek and south of creek regarding Safer Bay specific costs. Um, clarifying and getting more accurate information on the lease cost increases. Uh, getting information on the number for the last lease increase percentage, what the cost is per square foot. And if I can get some, uh, comparative information about what the, um, the current market is for the shared workspace costs per square foot. We're going to clarify the spreadsheet to put in a percentage for the reserve so that the, it's clear what the basis of the calculation is upon and what that percent number is inside the total member contribution. Um, I'll ask Kevin to attend the next finance committee meeting so that he can explain the acceleration of the CAP 205 program contribution. And we will do an explanation for the cost increases do, by percentage and then a note field about what those percentage increases reflect. That it?
Yeah. And just one follow-up thought on the, on the lease is it wouldn't surprise me if in this market shared workspace is running counter to the rest of the market in that there's a greater demand for it in a hybrid work model. And I haven't seen, I've been tracking a lot of the studies on what's happening in hybrid work. I haven't seen that broken down, but it seems logical to me, um, that, um, uh, companies would, would choose that as they're having, uh, workers not be in on a regular basis. Uh, which, you know, we didn't always have the shared workspaces. There, there are some advantages to that. But there also might be some opportunities on dedicated space. Um, and I, I know it's never, uh, uh, you know, when you, if you like the workspace, you don't want to consider moving, but I just wanted to put that out there. That could be what we're running up against is, um, that model being different from the rest of the office market.
And trending differently. It's certainly worth looking into and I will, um, I will do some research and I will look at what costs per square foot are uh, trending for, um, the kind of office, the size and shape, if you will, of the office space that we would need. Um, when we moved from our previous location to the current location, we did an exhaustive search in Menlo Park, Palo Alto and East Palo Alto for suitable office space. We've it was, uh, it was difficult to find a good match. So
Well, and that, that was what year?
That was two year, a year and a half ago.
Oh, after the pandemic hit.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
We moved after, after Margaret's hiring.
Although I would, um, so it'd be interesting what was kind of the dynamic at that time. I, I, I think folks hadn't started to adjust, uh, to the realities and nobody knew what they were going to be.
Right.
Uh, so maybe they were still kind of clinging to, you know, office demands that were based upon the boom.
It's, it's always good to do some comparison shopping, so I'm, I'm happy to do that. And, and we'll see what, what we find. It's nice to keep your finger on the pulse anyway.
Anecdotally, I've, I've seen, uh, spaces that were, were, were landlords were clinging to prior rent levels and then recently some breaking through and dropping the rent by half.
Oh.
Wow.
Yeah, um, that doesn't mean that's widespread, but it just kind of shows how much the market is in flux right now.
Right. Wow. Okay. Well, just so you know, some of our parameters were that the office space needed to be ADA accessible. It needed to be, um, either wifi equipped or equipable. It needed to be secure or have a security um, service. It needed to be in our member jurisdictions and preferably as close to the creek as possible.
But not too close yet.
Good caveat. However, there aren't any commercial spaces in those areas. So I think we're okay. Um, so, uh, and, and ideally, you know, ha- have, um, convenience walk, bike and public transportation access. So, so those are criteria that we used and I will continue to use those criteria.
Sounds good. Dave, I, just real quickly, I want to get together with you to talk about potential collaborations with PCE on electrification initiatives. You interested in doing?
Yeah, I mean, we're doing a lot in that area.
Yep. And I'm kind of leading the charge in Palo Alto on that. So I
I mean, are you, uh, you must be in touch with Silicon Valley Clean Energy, right?
Um, not yet. And I, I, I probably know the folks in your group better. And I know you and Rick and I know Jan and I know, uh, Raphael well. And so I, I plan to reach out to them, but have not been, uh, uh, other than at a high level, uh, talking with them about collaborations and then saying, yeah, let me know what you have in mind.
All right.
Remember, we're, we're on the far northern edge of Santa Clara County. We, we have more in common with San Mateo County in many ways than we do Santa Clara. Don't forget that. Why we're in this agency together.
Well, I know you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all. Are we?
Are we adjourned?
Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.